Okay, then we're gonna start. Good evening, everyone. The time is now seven thirty. PM. This is the February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-two work session of the Allen Dale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us in the audience. And on Zoom at this time, I ask the public to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be one opportunity during this meeting for public comment, and we will advise you at the appropriate time. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building. And on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two sunshine notice was sent to the record. Ridgewood News and Star Ledger and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Thank you. Please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Homan is absent. Councilwoman Lovasola here. Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole, Councilman Sasso, Councilwoman Losinski here, and Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you. Um, so now for me, the the highlight, I go bittersweet, thirty-four years. Thirty-three years, right? That's a that's quite a run. After thirty-four years, Lane Simon from our DPW is retiring. His last day is Monday. March first, Monday. You've you've been wonderful. You've been instrumental. You've been invaluable to all of us. And I'll let anyone else speak, but on behalf of the governing body and the residents, we want to thank you for your hard work and and your dedication. For all that you've given to the borough, and I'm going to present you with a plaque recognizing your service. And there are some people who are going to speak more eloquently and better than I am. So I would like to, why don't you guys speak and then I'll present?
When I started back into, the first person I met was Lane, met him at Crestwood Lake. And since then, as you say, his knowledge and commitment to the community has been amazing. So many, up until today, I was sending emails on something, and I think Monday, we're getting together on something else with the Borough Engineer and. Yeah, it's just, there's no words to explain the dedication and the knowledge he has about the community and his love as he, as they moved back into the community just about a year ago. Moved into the back in, so I think Allen Dale's greatest heart is that and his family. So great loss for the DPW, but. You know, he'll still be around and in the borough like, yeah, to enjoy it. And I'm sure he'll be calling with the snow removal and.
Now he's gonna start complaining at oh seven four hour one.
That's great. Wonderful. Um, I know Liz had a lot to say, but she's not here, so.
Yeah, I know she's gonna be really bummed. I mean, Lane, I feel like I've known you for for so long. I mean, if you probably know, you're like the the town historian. I think you know more than. Anyone and it's just like, it's like all in your head, like you just, it's just like. It's every time you have a question, you just always ask you, but you've always been like super cool and super nice, and I really, really enjoyed working with you, and I'm I'm really happy that you and Diana live in town. So and your your neighbors are my friends, so I'm sure I'll see you at some of those fun parties. So yeah, it's it is. It's a big loss for for Allen Dale, and I really wish you wonderful luck in the future. I'm sure you'll do great wherever you go or retire, whatever you're gonna do. So good luck to you.
Thank you. Um, and I don't know if Lisa had anything to say, whether Lisa is on or not. She is.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
Oh, good. Lane, I'm so sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight, but I just wanted to say a few words. I'm so sad to see you go, but I'm so very happy for you. My job would have been a lot harder if you weren't so helpful and knowledgeable. I could always count on you for the answers to any water question and some that weren't water questions. And you were always very patient with me, and I truly appreciate it. You will definitely be missed. I wish the best for you and your family with whatever venture adventure life brings you and enjoy. Thanks.
Thanks, Lisa.
We really gotta move this, sell this water system now.
That's right.
As you can tell.
Yeah, no, and I remember, I I remember, you know, Liz White, Liz Homan, on countless, countless occasions. When you would be there, you'd be either in Ron's office and a question would come up, you had the answer. I mean, invaluable, what what you brought to the table, what you brought for the benefit of Allen Dale. Lisa said it, you know, perfectly eloquently. We're happy and we're sad. It's truly a bittersweet moment. We wish you the best, but you you will be you will be missed.
So then when I first came on and was assigned to the Water Committee, Lane and I spent an afternoon together. He gave me the grand tour of the whole system. Couldn't have been more detailed, and this, this, this is that. I probably could have run at that point. Congratulations.
I know I'm kind of taking it personally here, because here I didn't even get a chance to really work with you, but I've heard nothing but the best things about you, and I just wish you guys all the best and congratulations on the retirement.
Great. Now obviously we can let you go down another storm.
Exactly.
So, um. This for you from the borough. Public comment, the first of three opportunities tonight for the public present to comment. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Not seeing anyone. Administration agenda, we have very light regular session agenda with three resolutions on the consent agenda. Any questions on those three items? Okay, the rather routine. Council reports. Councilman O'Connell, I mean, O'Connell is not here. Steve, would you like to give your report?
So the Facilities, Parks, Recreation Committee is not met, although we continue to talk. I mean, as I said, last meeting, there's not a lot to do right now in terms of parks and rec because of the weather, and Ron's got everything. Bundled up on facilities and and even planning for parks and rec. So, but Amy and I have been talking about the lake and the new system and bands and stuff, and. I personally cannot wait to get out and see a band. Bless you. And that's it.
Great. Thank you very much. Amy?
Um, we, the Finance Committee has not met in the last week. We have a, we're going to be scheduling a meeting next week to review the budget again, and just like Steve said, facilities, there's a couple bands that are getting. Booked, what Midlife Crisis just got booked today, as a matter of fact, and we look forward to plugging along. That's it.
Great. Thank you. Matt?
Yep, short report. Lot of improvements been made, Chief Dylan, working on the body cameras. Detective Bureau is working on numerous cases, including burglary, forty-four fire calls, hundred thirty-four EMS calls, and two thousand five hundred and sixteen police record entries and calls for service. And we will be having our public safety meeting next Tuesday.
Great. Thank you. Suzanne?
Uh, yep. So just a reminder, the Land Use Committee is going to meet always the morning of Land Use Board meeting. So so we did meet recently. We addressed some resident concerns and worked out what we think are some appropriate solutions to those concerns. We've made a recommendation to the Land Use Board that in order to reduce the large amounts of paper associated with reviewing. Applications to start pushing to receive our documents electronically. Some of us, however, are old school and prefer to a paper blueprint, so we will give board members a choice. Ask our applicants to start submitting electronically as well as providing a set number of paper copies and then start phasing that in. Um, also, just a reminder, as we prepare for potentially another storm tomorrow, we just wanted to remind. Homeowners that have sidewalks in front of their homes that the maintenance of the sidewalks is their responsibility.
Thank you. Very good point. For me, I have some things to report. Dog and cat licensing, two weekends ago, we had the free drive-up rabies clinic as well as the pet license registration at the Red Barn. Thank you to the Board of Health, especially Maria Cream and Linda Morgan, Tyco Animal Control, Dr. DeSanto from Ordo Animal Hospital, John Gill, Tatiana Marquis from the Clerk's Office. And Rich McDowell from DPW for putting it all together and making it so successful. A reminder, all dogs and cats living in Allen Dale must be registered regardless of whether they are indoor or outdoor pets. If you haven't done so, please complete our online application or visit the Clerk's Office. Late fees are now in effect. On Tuesday, March eighth, there will be a referendum for the Northern Highlands Regional High School District. We had a presentation here maybe four to six weeks ago. Voting will be from six AM to eight PM. Full details can be found in the Voters Guide in our Happening Newsletter. Compost pits on sale March fourteenth. People are calling. They get very excited about that, rightfully so. Applications can be completed from our website for purchase starting on March fourteenth, and the compost facility will open on Saturday, April second. Ron, do I have that right? Michelle? Yeah?
What she said.
Michelle said, so it must be so. Kindergarteners recycle beyond the bag program. Our kindergarten kindergarteners at Hillside School have partnered with a company called Trex to recycle clean past plastic bags. Not only will this help the environment by keeping these plastics out of our landfills, but they will be turned into a composite bench for our community to enjoy. Collection sites are Hillside and Brookside Schools as well as the lobby at Lee Memorial Library. Their goal is to collect forty thousand five hundred bags. Yeah, forty thousand five hundred. Please check out all the accepted items on their flyer, which is found in our March edition of Allen Dale Happenings, which will be going out in the next two.
Which school is?
Hillside and Brookside.
Hillside and Brookside.
Yes. Forty thousand five hundred.
I, we we did not, because we were gonna also institute the same program, so it's good to know that they're moving ahead of it. It's like, yeah, that's great.
It is great. I have I have a closet full of, maybe not forty thousand five hundred. I'll do my share. And finally, this coming Tuesday, March first, I will be meeting with the third graders to discuss how local government works. It's always exciting to engage with our next generation of leaders, and who knows, maybe one or more of them will be sitting up here where we are in several years. When I meet with the third grader, sometimes I have a special guest from 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 the Police Department, and they are always much more fascinated with with the person from the Police Department than with me.
So actually, I'm meeting with the eighth graders on March third, or what day, Michelle? Second, if you want to come, oh, March second, if you want to come visit, from like nine to two, I'm gonna just be up here working while they just kind of come in and do a little thing. Yeah, yeah, Jerry Goodman's class.
Right. That's great. I always get, that's great. Push me to the side and go right to the Police Department. All right, so. That's the end of my report. Ray, would you like to give your report?
Very brief, there were, doable course stuff since our last meeting, personnel matters and property issues with Mr. Kistner. TJ from my office working with Michelle's office on Oprah requests, which I'm sure she's gonna have something to say about later. Tom has been working on, I think with Ron, a cell tower issue. And I think there was one day since our last meeting, it was a Sunday where we didn't have something involving the Water Committee. So sure to that, I I think that, you know, things are progressing there, but obviously trying to bring this to closure near term. Obviously, it's it's been virtually, not virtually, it has been an everyday situation of either Zoom meetings, phone calls, emails, or. You know, all fashion phone calls. Yeah, and it really is, I think, every aspect of the the Borough Team is involved. On a daily basis in some aspect of what's going on.
Right.
And I'd say that's about it.
Great, and that's enough. Thank you for that. Michelle?
Thank you. Oprah is going strong. Seven Oprah requests were received today alone. Um, so, you know, Tatiana is doing an amazing job keeping up with them and responding, and it really does. Take. Many departments sometimes, most times to respond to these. It's not just, you know, a simple record, and and thank you to the Police Department too. Because building and and police are majority of the requests.
Right. Thank you.
As Mayor Bernstein mentioned, we have a successful rabies clinic. Two weeks ago, we vaccinated sixty-seven pets and licensed seventy-five, so that was good. Thank you to everyone who put it together. We're busy preparing for the March eighth special school election. And over the past two weeks, Tatiana, John and I have virtually attended meetings with some of our vendors about upgrading our software program programs. As an example, for the Councilman Sasso had mentioned upgrading our Crestwood Lake registration software. We also met yesterday. The Bergen County Elections officials held their annual meeting with the clerks. And for this year's June primary, there will be candidates on the ballot for Congress, Bergen County Executive, three Bergen County Commissioners. And locally, a mayor and two council seats, as well as county committee men and women for both the Democrats and Republicans in each of Allen Dale's four election districts. So it's going to be a very full ballot. Petitions for the local offices will be emailed to the municipal chairs for each political party tomorrow.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Great. Thanks so much. Alyssa, if you're on, you still on, do you have anything to report?
We are working diligently on the budget for two thousand and twenty-two. Okay, that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work on that. Truly appreciated. As we go down the line, Tyler, from the IT world of the borough.
Chief and I continue to spend a deal of time together. I I joked with him, I hadn't seen him at all this week, so things are progressing in a good direction. We had a meeting on Friday to talk about the body cameras, getting ready from an IT perspective for that. Other than that, everything is status quo.
Great. And John, I know soon I'm gonna get the email for the Mayor's Report for the March newsletter.
Already come up a couple times, put it together the newsletter for March, so if anyone has submissions, please get it to me ASAP. Because the election's on the eighth, I'd really like to get it out a little bit earlier this cycle, so the residents have that information fresh with them, so if I can get it by Monday, that'd be fantastic.
Wonderful. Good. Great. Thanks so much. Ron?
A couple of things, since Lane is here, Lane, Richie and Ray, as everybody knows, the main beach area got washed away in Idaho. Councilwoman, as Amy knows, the back area where the truck goes up and the chlorine building goes, that also was washed, and I was gonna have that done by an outside contractor as well. The guys took it upon themselves, the stone, running to the loader and the whacker up there, the guys did themselves, looks great. So that's one less thing we have to put out, forbid. The area that will go out, that needs to be done, where the beach had the washway, you'll be getting that in your first meeting in March, approve some specs, so we can put it out in bid for ten days, and then we'll award that, that will be done in April, so it's done before May first. The DPW staff is scheduled to come in at twelve thirty tonight. Hopefully, they can just stay there and talk for a while and go home, but we expect to be salt, we hope it's just a salt event, but we're ready for either a salt event slash. Plowing, it looks like it's gonna be a nice condition when the guys will be ready, and the outside contractor does the borough facilities is also on call for about three, three, four o'clock in the morning. Make sure the police department fight upon it, buildings are first, and then have this building done by opening tomorrow morning. I did notify the school for getting the school was closed this week, and Superintendent got a little laugh out of that one. So that was very good. As everyone else is saying, I just want to thank Chief Dylan. Not only is he working on police management, assisted me on numerous other issues as an administrator on several things, and. He still, he still answers the phone when I call him. I figure give it a couple more weeks, he's definitely gonna write the voicemail. The two thousand and twenty-two paving, myself and Mike Greeland worked on it. I would be making a recommendation to you. For the facilities slash DPW both groups, and hope you guys will be approving that. We didn't do any paving last year because of COVID, increased prices of four dollars on asphalt, but we will be back on the route programming this year. And finally. Something that started, I believe, nineteen ninety-one, DEP violations down at DPW facility. Very happy to report, I sent you guys pictures, the number of the monitoring wells were actually cemented up last week, which is a great, great start. And that will, there's the one more cleanup phase, which the Mayor Council approved in last year's capital budget, that I will be getting the approval on. Get that work started within the next four to six weeks, and that then that will also involve encapsulating or paving the parking lot at the DPW. This will be done by the fall of this year, so it's a, it'd be nice to have that project done, something that came up way before any of us, you know, were involved.
Right.
It's a nice. Do we gotta take that sign off of the building?
So I guess I'll take that. The only, the only, I did, I have to admit, I did let former Mayor White know about this, and I did get a wee, so. It's good stuff. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much.
Lane was a rookie when that started.
Right. Chief Dylan, so thrilled to see you here.
Glad to be here, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I thank you to Mayor Council, Ron, for continued support. Special thanks Borough Mechanic Dan Richards for helping us. Parents issues, his expertise and hard work is much appreciated, and the partners staying current, growing this state mandate, guidelines, and training. And thank you to Regus for who has been instrumental in providing guidance.
The extension on that is, and if you see the cheese vehicle, he did not get new wheels. Him and Dan, they painted them straight, and they look brand new.
That is just like the weirdest thing that men do. I'm sorry, with wheels, they paint them and shine up the wheels. I never understood that.
It looks great.
You wanna talk about some stuff that we don't understand?
Steve, I'm not gonna let you fill up us.
That was good.
So we're we're still on course for for a quick meeting, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna open up. Chief, anything else? Okay. At the risk of going completely off the rails, we're gonna bring it back, and I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
So move.
Great. Second?
Second of us all.
Thanking all in favor. Great. Everyone just hang tight for seven minutes. Are we on, Tyler? The time is now eight o'clock, and this is the February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two regular session of the Allen Dale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us tonight in person and via Zoom. At this time, I'd ask the public president to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of meeting. There'll be two opportunities for those present to speak during this meeting, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. Meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building. And on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two sunshine notice was. Notice of this meeting by the February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. And has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough Website.
Great, thank you. If you all please join me, rise to salute the flag.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
So, please conduct the roll call.
Sure, Councilwoman Holman is absent. Councilwoman Luv Sol.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here, thank you. Uh, public comment on agenda items only. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on agenda items only? Not seeing anyone. Um, we will close the meeting to the public for that portion consent agenda. Um, I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Amy's second, Steve's second. Um, Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Sure, Councilwoman Holman is absent. Councilwoman Luv Sol.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman.
I mean, yes. Sorry.
Councilman. Councilman O'Connell is absent. Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wilson.
Thank you. Uh, any unfinished business? Any new business? You did our committee reports, you've done our staff reports. Public comment on any items, on anything? Not seeing anyone, I would request a motion to adjourn the regular session.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.